Welcome everyone to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is now called Order. We all rise, please, to salute the flag. Councilman Ventura, please do the salute. Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement and public notice.
Take notice, the adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the Township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Present.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Havlet.
Present.
Councilmember Ventura.
Present.
Council President Scobah.
Present. We're going to break up the minutes with two different motions. I think there was a council member that was absent from the twenty-seventh meeting, so have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Ventura, second by Councilman Murphy. All those in favor approving those, uh, this is a roll call, please call the roll for the meeting of February twenty-seventh.
Councilmember Patel.
Present.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet.
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes, have a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes of March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havlet.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Patel, although, uh, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet.
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes, Mayor D'Amiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, we have a couple of proclamations that I would like to read into the record uh, as we are here in the munch of, uh, month of March with April rapidly approaching. Uh, the first is for autism awareness. And with April beginning Autism Awareness Month and with our autism, uh, flag raising occurring on April first, uh, the first proclamation I would like to read is in support of autism and autism awareness. And it reads, whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas, as more helpful, mental, as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are be, being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in fifty-four children nationally and one in thirty-two in New Jersey. And whereas, while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. And whereas, individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present. And whereas, autism New Jersey is spearheading an awareness effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. And now therefore be it resolved that during April two thousand twenty-three, as National Autism Awareness Month, each of us will become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. And be it further resolved that I, Mayor James Belford D'Amiano, do hereby recognize April two thousand twenty-three as Autism Awareness Month in the Township of Little Falls. And again, a little more information will be coming from Councilman Ventura in a few minutes about our April first, uh, flag raising that we will be having here at Town Hall. Uh, but I hope all of you can join us here, uh, at the front steps, uh, as, and again, Councilman Ventura will be sharing some more of that information. Uh, the next proclamation that I would like to read this evening is our World Down Syndrome Day proclamation. And it reads, whereas people with Down Syndrome make significant contributions to the fabric of life. They participate in the workplace, run their own businesses, take part in religious activities, create art, music, and dance, excel in sports and recreation, and pursue studies in schools, community colleges, and universities. And whereas Down Syndrome is not a disability, nor is it an illness, it is a distinct culture within all cultures with its own beliefs, customs, language, and common bonds. People gifted with an extra twenty-two chromosome transcend borders, socioeconomics, color, and ethnicity, bring with them a richness that enhances the lives of those they touch. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is recognized worldwide as a day to raise awareness and to celebrate the many accomplishments, contributions, and talents that people with Down Syndrome bring to the, their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford D'Amiano, on behalf of the Township of Little Township Council, do hereby proclaim March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as World Down Syndrome Day in the Township of Little Falls. Now, with that, we have an individual here in town who has, I believe, and as far as research has told, may be the oldest individual, if not in, uh, the country, at least in the state of New Jersey currently. And while he's not joining us here today, uh, this evening, we intend to be delivering to his house tomorrow, um, something, and I want to read a proclamation to him, uh, here. And not only does he reside here in Little Falls, but he has dedicated over eighty-two years of service to the Little Falls Fire Department. Uh, and that's, again, not that he's eighty-two years old. He's dedicated eighty-two years to the Little Falls Fire Department. So we want to read a proclamation to Vincent Dransfield, who is currently tomorrow going to be celebrating his one hundred and ninth birthday. So, fun fact about this is I can't just show up whenever I want tomorrow because he's not actually home all day. And that's not because he gets picked up and gets brought to different places. That's because he gets in his own car and he drives to wherever he want during, during the day, and he oftentimes goes to shop, right? And then quick check and makes his rounds. So I need to actually schedule a time that he will actually be home tomorrow to make sure that I can coordinate catching him there to deliver this proclamation to him at a hundred and nine years old. So this evening, I'm going to be reading a proclamation, uh, to him and in his honor. And tomorrow, hopefully coordinating with a group to meet him at his house, uh, at a time that he will be there, uh, to actually present this to him in person. And it reads, whereas Vincent Dransfield is a longtime resident of the Township of Little Falls. And whereas Vincent Dransfield will be celebrating his one hundred and ninth birthday on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Vince has been a member of the Singac Fire Company Number Three since the nineteen forties, dedicating eighty-two years of service to the township. And whereas, it is believed that Vince is the oldest living New Jersey resident to date. Now therefore, I, James Belford D'Amiano, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby recognize Vincent Dransfield on his one hundred and ninth birthday and wish him continued health and longevity for many more years to come. We get a round of applause for Vincent Dransfield. We could all make it just a good percentage of that time, living as healthy as he has. God bless. As many of us all here know, March is Women's History Month. And Little Falls is blessed to have a lot of strong women who live here, who work here, who dedicate a lot of time to the Township of Little Falls. And tonight, we want to recognize just some of the women here in Little Falls who have dedicated so much of their time, uh, living here, working here, uh, and really making Little Falls the incredible place that it is to live, to work, to be every single day. And I'm going to ask, uh, each of these women, one by one, to join me up here as I say just a couple of words about them, and I present them with a, each of them with a proclamation. And I'm going to read the proclamation one time, uh, because again, they're, uh, the, the proclamations themselves are, are similar, but I'm going to, again, say just a couple of words about each of them as they stand up here, uh, with me. And the proclamation themselves read, whereas each year, Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our community. And whereas, in overcoming discrimination, harassment, and hardship, women have been bold and fearless, niving, never giving up on the promise that with hard work and determination, nothing is out of reach. And whereas, in remembering the trailblazers of the past and the heroines of the present day, we honor their legacies by carrying forward the valuable lessons learned from the powerful examples they set, whether teaching our children, caring for our sick, serving in our wars, starting businesses, serving in elected positions, or venturing into the unknown frontiers. Generations of women believed their gender was no obstacle to what they could achieve. And whereas, during Women's History Month, we recognize the advances we have made in this state for women, but acknowledge that more needs to be achieved so women can gain gender equality and access to the prosperity of this state. And whereas, during Women's History Month, let us honor the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our community, including those who have contributions, including those whose contributions have not been adequately recognized and celebrated. Now therefore, I, James Belford D'Amiano, Mayor of the Township of Little, Little Falls, hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-three to be Women's History Month in the Township and recognize all of the women in our community, and especially those in leadership roles who continuously improve upon our community each day. And now again, I'm going to call, uh, several women up here to join me this evening as we honor each of them. And I do want to thank Councilwoman Havlet for organizing this event this evening. I know she spent some time, uh, setting this up, and I want to thank her for her support in doing this. So the first woman I asked, um, the first woman I'm going to ask to join me up here this evening is our Little Falls Fire Department in, and our EMT, Sarah Ramos. All right, and I want to present you with this proclamation. And for those of you that don't know, Sarah is a Little Falls Fire Department Female Lieutenant at Company Three. And she's a full-time E and EMT for our Little Falls EMS. She's responded to numerous calls over the years and was one of the first on the scene, leading the response to a fatal motor vehicle accident last summer. I want to thank Sarah for everything that she does for the Township of Little Falls, for keeping all of us safe. And Sarah is one of the very first to be part of what is now our new EMS program here in town, which has reduced our response times from what used to be our volunteer program here in to, in town, which sometimes had uh, significant delays in our responses because we were waiting for volunteers to respond to, to calls, which again, was a great program to have here in town, but unfortunately, we, at times, had to wait thirty and forty minutes for an ambulance to respond. Now with Sarah and this new crew and our new EMS team in, in, in place, response times have been under four minutes every single time. And I want to thank her and all the women that are involved in this program for everything that they do, day in and day out. Thank you, Sarah. The next woman I want to ask to join me up here is our very own Police Lieutenant Dawn Gilchrist. So for those of you that don't know Lieutenant Gilchrist, she is the first female lieutenant on our police department here in town. She's also our first LGBTQ plus Police Officer Liaison. The position was started with the purpose to ensure trust and promote a positive working relationship between the Little Falls Police Department and the LGBTQ plus community through education and community outreach efforts. She's also a police training instructor for the Police County, uh, Passaic County Police Academy. On a personal note, for those of you that don't know, Lieutenant Gilchrist has always been willing to go above and beyond anything that's ever been asked of her. She has never once shied away from anything that's been asked. It's, working with Lieutenant Gilchrist has been an absolute pleasure from the minute that she's put on the bar of being a lieutenant. And I want to thank her for everything that she has done for the Little Falls community. Thank you. The next woman I want to ask to join me up here is our very own individual who has done so much for our library over the past few years, Ann Kawati. For those of you that don't know Ann, she's the President of the Little Falls Library Board of Trustees and a member of the Little Falls Open Space Committee. She's also the Chairperson for the Passaic County Open Space and a Passaic County Master Gardener. We appreciate all she's done for the library, for Little Falls, and Passaic County. And Little Fo, Little Falls is lucky to have Ann. She has been more than willing to give us every bit of information that she has had, especially as a master gardener. And for those of you that know me, know I know very little about gardening. And having Ann to provide all the information that she does have about gardening has been absolutely incredible and very helpful uh, to ensure that Little Falls remains a green place and a place where we have a beauty in our parks and our surrounding areas. So Ann, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for everything you've done for our library. We appreciate all of your help. The next two ladies I'm going to ask to join me up here together are Karen Winnick and Rhonda Malik. So if you don't know Karen, eh, Karen and Rhonda, the two of them together have put together our Little Falls Biz. Karen and Rhonda are co-presidents of the Little Falls Biz and our Little Falls Business Association, for those of you that don't know what Little Falls Biz is. Not only do they welcome and support our local businesses, but they create our wonderful community events such as the Little Falls, uh, Fall Festival, the Breakfast with Santa event, and the Little Falls Block Party. They sponsor the Farmer's Market, the dog, uh, for the Doggy Halloween Contest, and they participate in our Holiday Peddlers Village and attend other various township events. These two women have helped and been involved with every small business venture that we've had here in town. And I really want to thank them for everything that they do in ensuring that our downtown continues to remain thriving. They have been such an important asset to our downtown community, and I want to thank them for everything that they do in keeping Little Falls and our downtown thriving area. And I thank you for being such an integral part of everything that we do here in town. Every single event, the two of you always jump to be the first two to make sure that all of our events run smoothly. So I want to thank you both for everything that you do. We have another group of women who I'm going to ask to join me as a group up here because this group, as a group, is known as our Little Falls ABC. And Little Falls ABC is known together to do so much. But of course, Little Falls ABC would be nothing without a group of women behind it, running everything. And this group of women consists of Rene Shapiro, Janice Alvarez, Elaine Zwaibel, and Angela Farina. And I'm going to ask them to join me up here. The Little Falls ABC provides our town with all of the wonderful concerts that we've all known to love and enjoy. The ABC was one of the first organizations to bring these types of community events to our town. They're a totally volunteer organization that's funded through membership donations and grants. Angela's the Secretary for ABC and is also the Branch Manager at Vision's Federal Credit Union, who's provided grants for local businesses such as Ethan and the Bean, and to our Little Falls Historical Society, towards the construction of the old Town Hall project. These other three women have been such an integral part of Little Falls ABC since, since its inception in putting together the concerts and all of the incredible events that Little Falls ABC has run over the years. And I want to thank them for everything that they do. These women always shy away from being center stage, from taking a microphone, from ever taking the spotlight for everything that Little Falls ABC does, and always saying that it's Little Falls ABC that runs the event. But they are truly the face of Little Falls ABC. And I know they don't even like standing here tonight to accept this recognition. But it is truly these women that have put ABC together and that make all of these events happen in town. And Little Falls is a better place because of what Little Falls ABC does. And I want to thank all of you for everything that you do, every single summer and all year round, for putting Little Falls ABC together and for everything that Little Falls ABC does. So thank you all. And last but not least this evening, there is one more person who I'm going to ask to join me up here. And she has been the face of our schools for a number of years now. And she has put Little Falls and Little Falls Schools truly on the maps. And that is our Superintendent of Schools, Tracy Marinelli. So I don't think I truly need her bio, or, but I'm going to read it here. Little Falls School Superintendent Tracy Marinelli became the Superintendent in two thousand and fifteen. She's transformed our schools since that time. Under her leadership, there's school pride and incredible academic curriculum and facility upgrades that have been made. Little Falls Schools are the gem of our area. Now an award-winning district, winning such awards as the two thousand and twenty-two Award Best Elementary and Middle Schools by U.S. World and Reports, National Blue Ribbon Schools in two thousand and nineteen, in the New Jersey Lighthouse District, just to name a few. Tracy herself was named Passaic County Superintendent of the Year in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, New Jersey Region One Superintendent of the Year. To say that Tracy has really catapulted the Little Falls Schools into an entirely new millennium is putting it lightly. And the Township of Little Falls is a better place because Tracy Marinelli is the Superintendent of our Little Falls Schools. And without her, Little Falls as a township would not be what we are today without her as the Superintendent of our schools. And having young kids of my own, and whether or not you have young kids or not, Little Falls is a better place because of Tracy Marinelli. And I am appreciative, and everyone in town is appreciative for everything that you do. Thank you so much. Little Falls appreciates you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here this evening about, uh, our, our Women's History Month proclamations. I do have one more, uh, quick report this evening, uh, before we round out, uh, my reports. Um, but again, I want to thank, uh, all of you incredible women for joining us here this evening. Little Falls is truly a better place because of everything that all of you do here for us every single day. So thank you all.
May be the last item, uh, supportive New Jersey liquor license reform?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So I received a, an email from the State of New Jersey, uh, particularly the senior aide, one of the senior aides in the Governor's Office, in the Intergovernmental Affairs Office, uh, requesting support for a letter from mayors statewide in support of, uh, a letter that, or I'm sorry, in support of, uh, essentially reform to New Jersey's liquor license laws. And essentially what the support letter indicates is that liquor license laws in the state of New Jersey are uh, almost a century old now at this point. They date back to the time of about the prohibition and the legalization of alcohol in the entire, uh, country. And what it is requesting is that essentially the laws, uh, in the state be modified so that uh, BYOBs and let, so that liquor licenses essentially, and the limited number of them that are awarded throughout municipalities be lightened up in the laws surrounding it, so that places that are currently BYOBs because they don't have their own liquor license be permitted to sell alcohol, uh, to individuals. Now, of course, this is something that could be controversial in the sense that it may devalue current liquor licenses, uh, but of course, that could have some support in the sense that it would allow places that are currently BYOBs to have the ability to serve alcohol and generate additional revenue. Um, this is not something that I am or have made up my mind entirely on in the sense that I believe that it is prudent for myself or this municipality to support one way or the other. Uh, but it was something that I wanted to bring to this council's attention and open up for some discussion to the council to see if it is something that this council would prefer that I do or do not support moving forward. Uh, and again, was just opening it up here now, so that this council is aware. And, uh, maybe Madam Court can assist. I believe that the municipality has thirteen or fourteen liquor licenses uh, within the entire municipality. I believe that on our population, we are allowed to have something like ten liquor licenses. Uh, so the additional liquor licenses that the municipality currently has are essentially grandfathered in, uh, because we've had them in existence prior to the date where, uh, we've said based upon the population of Little Falls, we are only allowed to have a ten liquor licenses. There have always been about these fourteen liquor licenses that we have here in
we are only allowed to have 10 liquor licenses. There have always been about these 14 liquor licenses that we have here in town. So they've remained in existence this whole time. So again, it could impact these 14 liquor licenses that we currently have here in Little Falls. But again, just putting it out for discussion that there is a letter that the state of New Jersey is requesting. And again, this was sent statewide to all mayors requesting support that liquor license laws essentially be relaxed and that liquor licenses essentially be not as essential to sell alcohol as they previously had been. So, opening that for discussion to yourself as well as the council members.
Does the council members have any questions or comment at this time regarding the issue of this liquor reform?
Just quick comment.
Yeah, real quick. Senator Carrato about an hour and a half ago, I just got an email with the bill on it. So what I'll do is I'll forward that on to the rest of my colleagues on the council. This way they can take a look at it. This way we could speak to some business owners in town, some of the recipients of the liquor licenses and see, you know, what their feelings are with it as well as, you know, business owners that don't have liquor licenses. This way we can kind of make an informed decision. I think that would be probably the best step to take.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. I gather the state's, you know, looking to help out businesses that don't have liquor licenses. But I would imagine if I was a proprietor, an owner of a liquor license in town, I would first think this is going to devalue my liquor license and what's that going to do to the value of what I paid a lot of money for that license. And also looking at the businesses that are the BYOB, bring your own. At times dining at those establishments, people often forget to bring something and they wish they had. And they sometimes have relationships with liquor stores. Other times, you know, you're just going to have to drink water or coke because there's nothing to be served. So the bill, I think through Council Murphy, you know, we could take a look at that. I'm sure it's going to be changed as it goes along. But I look for, you know, input as the council received this tonight to think about it more. So we could give the mayor guidance going forward. Are there any more questions or comments regarding the liquor reform?
I just had a quick question.
Councilwoman Patel?
Thank you, President Scobie. Do we know approximately how many new licenses we would be allowed to have under the new proposed bill?
I don't think mayor in the bill, I don't know if we had an opportunity to see if it would be based on population or it'd be, or if anyone who just applies. I don't know if that's specific enough at this point.
It doesn't. This letter essentially states that we agree with the need to overhaul the cumbersome restrictions that presently exist. And essentially gets into the fact that we just need to currently, we need to review what's currently in place and create an overhaul to what currently exists. It doesn't say that there needs to be double an amount or quintuple the amount. It just says that there needs to be an overhaul to the presently existing laws that surround liquor licenses in the state of New Jersey.
Councilwoman Havilts?
Is there any discussion of distilleries and breweries and being able to then serve liquor and food? Is that something that comes into this into play?
Food is not specifically addressed in here. I think they can already serve food. I don't know that that's necessarily the issue. But it does touch upon briefly the need for, you know, breweries to be able to have a competitive advantage within the state and things such as that. So it does briefly touch upon that as part of the language of this letter. Happy to circulate the letter that they're seeking to support on to all the council members if I haven't already. I thought I'd press forward. If I didn't, I certainly will.
Yes, I think currently they can have food trucks where they can bring in food, but they can't cook and serve food on the premises right now as far as distilleries and breweries. So that would be interesting. Thank you.
Through the floor, Councilman Ben Cherry.
Thanks, Council President. And I know too, I was reading mayor, I guess too, one of the things that came up in some of the articles and some, you know, broadcast segments is one of the things that was still to be did is how towns versus cities would be looked at, especially based on the demographics. That was something that keeps coming up because like you said, it needs an overhaul. We're trying to figure it out. And, you know, Council Murphy, if you can send us that bill, it's great. So I think, you know, a conversation is definitely going to be warranted with those who own a liquor license versus the businesses that may be interested. To Council President Scobie's point, there's many times where all of us had done that, gone to a restaurant and said, oops, I forgot to get a bottle. And, you know, unless you're near a liquor store, you're not going to run out and go get one. So I totally get that. But looking forward to seeing this discussion continue.
See no more questions or comments. We'll move on. Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Murphy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First things first, I just want to say congratulations to all the women recipients tonight. It's great to see everybody here and it's a great honor and everything that you guys do for our community truly is never overlooked. And we appreciate it and I appreciate it. So thank you for everything that you guys do. Other than that, just want to go over the budget. As Council President is aware, we've had a ton of meetings on the budget. And in doing that, you know, that's something that we want to make sure we're very physically responsible in doing. And we went through the budget with a fine tooth comb. And, you know, one of the things I was most concerned about was looking at the budget and making sure that everything on there wasn't a want but a need. Being physically responsible to the community and taxpayers. And I think that's exactly what this budget is. As we went through every line item, everything was a necessity that's going to better the town and a necessity that every department had is asking for. And I think is definitely needed. So in doing that, I think that was accomplished. I just want to thank the mayor for the budget. Council President for coming through everything for me and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Councilman Ben Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. I echo what Councilman Murphy just said, you know, congratulations to all the women in leadership that were honored tonight. As we celebrate March as Women's International History Month, it's always great to see we have a lot of strong women in this town who do a lot of great things. So congratulations to all of you that are still here as well. Appreciate everything you do. A couple items on my end, I do want to mention as the mayor alluded to earlier, thank you for the proclamation for Autism Awareness Month. This Saturday, April 1st at 10:00 a.m. right outside here at Town Hall, we are going to raise the autism awareness flag. Because April is, you know, autism awareness. So looking forward to that. The mayor is going to read the proclamation once again. We'll have Pam Donovan also from Ethan and Abin there for a few words. And we're working on a couple other surprise guests. So more to come, but looking forward to hopefully seeing everyone on Saturday. I know there's a chance of rain, but the great thing is we have a little cover there and some umbrellas. So we're going to go as planned on April 1st for the flag raising. You know, I do want to mention to a couple of recent events that most of us were able to attend. Recently, myself, Council President Scobie and Councilman Murphy were able to attend the Girl Scouts of Sique Valley tree foil race recently. So it was great to see the kids in town. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we went to the Boy Scouts event. So it was nice to see the Girl Scouts out there with the little race cars and doing what they need to do. And then, you know, yesterday I do want to give kudos to the Little Falls Athletic Club as well as the Sique Valley Lady Hornets, myself, Mayor Damiano and Councilwoman Havilts attended the kickoff to their spring swing tournament that took place this past weekend. Unfortunately, the weather impacted Saturday, but they were able to get in a full day of softball games with over 32 teams from around the New York, New Jersey and Pennsylvania area. And then this weekend coming up on April 1st and April 2nd, they're going to do it again with more teams. So it's a nice event to see all the girls out there playing softball. I do also want to recognize, you know, as you've seen recently, we've honored a lot of the sports teams that have come through recently for winning championships. The good news is we're going to have three more coming probably sometime next month because last week, three of the Little Falls basketball teams, the girls third and fourth grade team, the girls fifth and sixth grade team, and then the boys fifth and sixth grade team all won championships. So looking forward to honoring them as well in the near future. I also want to give kudos to our resident Leal Azanka. You know, last week I was able to meet with her to help light the lights outside in honor of Ramadan. You know, appreciate the resident coming to us and asking us to do something for Ramadan. So just thank you for that. And also those that are celebrating Ramadan as well. Lastly, I do want to read something because, you know, what's interesting is a lot of times you go on social media and sometimes going on social media is not fun because Facebook can be complaint book. A lot of times you hear that from people just whining about certain things and really don't see some of the positives that are being done. And I want to read something that was sent to me as well as Chief Proll recently by a resident. And for the record, you know, the resident is a friend of mine. He called me first to say, hey, can I email this to the chief? And I said, absolutely. Good evening. I currently reside at 25 Maple Street in Little Falls. Over the past several days, I've noticed a huge increase in traffic stops. I must say that I'm overjoyed and very thankful for the same. I have four young children. I for one am tired of speeders. I thank you for your hard work and dedication to my most difficult job. May God keep you and your family safe. Sincerely, Mike Martinello. Yeah, I just want to say kudos to the Little Falls Police Department. The job that they have done under the leadership of Chief Proll is really going out there and heard from the residents. There's a lot of complaints about speeding. That was the number one complaint. There is a program in place where people can sign up and let everybody know about the problem. And the police department is out there investigating it. And to see a response like this from a resident is always appreciated. Because sometimes when you go on social media, oh, there's no police here. There's no police there. No, the police are there. They're doing their job. And to see this is an ultimate gratification. So kudos to you, chief, as well as the police department. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Ben Cherry. Councilwoman Havilts?
Thank you, Council President. So I'd also like to congratulate all of our women leaders that were honored tonight. We are really blessed in this township to have so many strong women running so many of our community events and in our police department and our fire department and for our schools. So thank you for all that you do. I just want to bring up some library updates. The library is doing a diorama contest. It is a peeps diorama contest. Peeps are one of my favorite things for the spring season. So if you do not know what a diorama is, it is one of those shoebox scenes that you make that we may have made in elementary school. And it will be based on one of your favorite spring books. The drop off for the peeps diorama is at the library from April 13th to April 15th. Then you can stop by the library to cast your vote from April 17th to April 22nd. And the winner will be announced on April 26th at 6:30 p.m. by the mystery reader. There's also a cupcake storytime coming up on Saturday, April 1st from 1:00 to 2:00 with our very own Mo and Jay's. It will be followed by a cupcake decorating class. This is for ages five and up, but you must register on the library website for this. There is also a Lego ramen night, Lego ramen night, excuse me, on April 3rd from 6:30 to 7:30. Stop by and create your favorite Lego project. The Friends of the Library had its open house just on March 21st. It was a very successful event. There were refreshments from Bibiana's right here in town and Mo and Jay's. So thank you to both of them for providing the refreshments. It was nice to see a lot of people and a great turnout. And the goal of the Friends is to help raise funds for the library. So if you're interested in joining part of their membership, you can go on to the library website and see, you can sign up there. Plans are underway for the first annual bike rodeo, which will take place on May 6th with a rain date of May 13th. The bike rodeo will promote bike safety while having an activity-filled bike ride through our township. So registration will be up on Community Pass. There is not a fee, however, we would like for people to register in order to be able to give some giveaways to our participants. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Havilts. Councilwoman Patel?
Thank you, Council President. Well, you can't have enough congratulations. So I too want to congratulate all the women that were recognized tonight. It's great to see Little Falls have such strong women that are out there doing what needs to be done that others can look up to. So congratulations on that. For the Public Health Committee, the Clifton Board of Health had their second event in Little Falls on Thursday. A lot of people did attend. They were there to answer questions, provide information. There were some free giveaways. We did get really good feedback. So I'm working with the Clifton Board of Health in order to try to bring more events to Little Falls itself. Currently in Clifton for the remainder of the month, there's two events going on. Wednesday, March 29th from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Clifton Health Department, there is a bone density screening. This one does have a fee. It's $12, but you can register for that on the website. And then on Friday, March 31st, between 2:00 and 4:00, again, at the Clifton Health Department, there is free hearing screening. So I encourage residents to go. And then finally, last week on Wednesday, Councilman Murphy and I were able to attend trivia night at the library and we had a lot of fun. So I encourage everyone to, you know, keep an eye out, see what events they're hosting because they are really doing great things there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Murphy, you have anything on the calendar that you could bring to this governing body and the residents?
Of course, Council President. So last Thursday, myself, Councilman Havilts and our new Assistant Business Administrator Vince got together and we're proud to announce that we are going to be moving forward with our townwide calendar this year. That's going to be sent out to every business and resident in town. So this is something that we're very happy to be working on. And we're finally putting the steps to move forward with it. We did decide that Mr. Pace is going to be helping with some advertisements. People have some advertisements in it. So if any business in town that you could reach out to or any business owners that may be listening, we'll be reaching out to them as well. If you're interested in being in this calendar, it's going to go to every home in Little Falls. It's a great opportunity to be able to be a part of it, get yourself recognized. And we want to support Little Falls businesses as well. So it's going to be a great opportunity. We're going to have a lot in there. Town events, town information, contact info. So definitely be on the lookout for that. Reach out to Mr. Pace or Council President if you're interested in it and we'll be able to get you on there.
Thank you. We just want to let the residents know on April 26th, Little Falls ABC is hosting a one night only at 6:00 p.m. at the Ties. So keep that on your calendar if you want to attend. Saturday, April 22nd is our spring fling for the senior advisories. We're limiting that to 100 people. And we're getting there. So please reach out to myself or reach out to Cynthia Kraus or reach out to the rec department to participate in that great event. John Moreno, I can't think of the rest of the band, what they're called. I'm sorry. But John Moreno and his crew are going to be playing at that event. He's a local resident that's been playing the saxophone for, I think, about 60 years. So it's a fantastic band. It's going to be a great evening. For those that want to attend, please do call. Congratulations to all the women and to every, all the other individuals that the mayor has recognized. It's important that the governing body recognize our residents in Little Falls that do great good deeds for our community. Chief Proll, you have anything for this governing body to say?
Thank you, Council President. Just briefly, I'm glad, Councilman, you recognize the good job that the officers are out doing. So I'm happy to announce that beginning April 1st, we are the recipient of another Division of Highway Traffic Safety Grant. We'll be out enforcing the you drive, you text, you pay distracted driving. So there'll be 100 hours of enforcement beyond the regular assignment of the police officers that's reimbursable by the state. So you will see even more traffic enforcement. Junior Police Academy applications are out. That's for school age children between five and seventh grades. Those are due back to headquarters by March 31st if you are interested. And then we have the warm weather approaching. We just asked everybody to just, you know, monitor their speeds and just look out for our pedestrians out in the roadway. So we have a nice, you know, safe spring.
Chief, I was going through your extensive report and I see that 28 Oprah requests came through, which required 514 pages. I was really taken back by that. That seems like an awful lot of work to handle those Oprah requests. Is that on the average what you receive your department monthly?
That's about accurate for our monthly Oprah ask. So Cynthia probably can answer more on how many the township receives. Those are just the asks on the police department side that we're fulfilling.
So Mrs. Kraus, what has the township received this year if you have that Oprah request?
So this year we've received about 200 Oprah requests to date.
To date?
To date. I'd say we receive between 800 and 1,000 Oprahs per year.
And when those Oprah requests come through, tell us, can you enlighten me to the procedure and what needs to be done?
So the procedure for when Oprahs are received is that we log them into a spreadsheet because they are required to be responded to within seven business days. So we log them in the day that we receive them, who it's from, what department it goes to, the date that it's due. Sometimes it requires follow-up with the department. And then once we receive the documents back, we usually go through each page to see if there are any redactions that are necessary. And then we send it out and then we finish our logging process.
Seems like an awful lot of time there for Oprah requests. Has the township always been getting this level of Oprah requests or has this escalated in the current years with computerization or?
So it does increase every year. We, we do receive more every year, especially now that there's no charge for Oprah requests when they're, when they're given electronically.
And in the past, was there, how much was the charge?
So in the past, I think it was 75 cents for the first 10 pages, 50 cents for the next 10 pages, and then 25 cents for every page thereafter. And then they, they changed it so that I think, I think the law is now that it's five cents for a letter size and seven cents for legal size. But if you ask for it to be delivered electronically, you don't, you don't have a fee. There's no, so most, most, most people are getting these things electronically. So the departments are doing the work, but there is no fee attached to these requests.
And that means by the state statute, not by local government?
Right, that's correct.
You know, Councilman, one of the things you have to consider though is while
You know, Councilman, one of the things you have to consider though is while the request comes in for an electronic copy of these documents, oftentimes internally, what needs to happen is when Ms. Kraus follows up with the building department for documents, if that's what is being sought by an individual, the building department needs to print out the hundred and fifty pages that may be requested. Because each page then needs to be gone through, make sure that there's no redactions that are necessary. So those pages are still being printed internally.
Right.
They're then being scanned in and sent electronically. So the work being done internally here within the building, the, the copies are still being made. The printing is still being done. It's just being scanned and sent electronically. So while the municipality is not receiving this, again, small fee for it, the issue here is that the, and again, not that it should be a deterrent. Everybody should be entitled to receive whatever public information and open documentation that they should be entitled to. The issue here is that people now are able to request whatever voluminous documents that they want with absolutely no concern for the amount of work or the amount of documentation that is going to have to be responded to. And the amount of work that's put on the, the individuals within the municipality for the documentation being provided back to them because they know there's zero fee that's going to be charged to them as a result of however many documents they, they're asking for. So in the past, when individuals may have sought just a couple of documents, now they'll ask for the entire year's worth of documentation rather than just a couple of meetings worth of information that they may have previously asked for. So it's an issue that we face. It's creating a lot more work for the municipality, for the, the individuals that work for the municipality, for the clerks in particular. And, and, and again, there's zero dollars and cents that we get to recuperate on our end for it.
Uh, Councilor Wenzel? Through you, Council President. I have the pleasure of working hand in hand with your clerk's office when these come in, when it involves something that's all more complicated. And the amount, you realize it's also time off task because of the various things that your clerk's office has to get done statutorily, regulatorily on top of the request. And once again, I think the mayor hit nail on the head. It's not about denying people access. It's that there is a constant flow. It is not unique to Little Falls. Many other places I represent get this and sometimes get it ten times worse. And I don't want to jinx Cynthia by this. But there's, I mean, there's actually a group out there that's known as Oprah Machine. And literally their job is to churn out these requests. And sometimes these requests are arcane, to say the least. They're asking for minutes from, in one town I represent, they ask for the minutes from nineteen eighty-two. I don't think that Cynthia was born.
Not yet.
Not yet. And yet there is a requirement by her or any clerk to respond back that she has to, even though she knows full well that there are no minutes from nineteen eighty-two in the building, okay? She has an obligation to look and then certify that she looked. So Council President, you're, you're, you, you, I, I think everyone in, on the dais should appreciate and understand, and I think the public should understand the amount of work that has to be done. And I know that the mayor hit on this a little bit, but when, when a redaction needs to be done, a redaction has to be done in a specific matter. And on top of all, that document has to be taken, printed out, blanked out, not blanked out.
Blacked out.
Blacked out. Thank you, Cynthia. Blacked out, then taken because you can't just take it because obviously they can see the mark through, then scan it through, then put it, then send it out. And the vast, I don't say the vast majority, but it's getting to be the vast majority of these requests are by anonymous. So the whole point of Oprah originally was for the citizen. John Q. Public, Jane Q. Public out there to say, I wonder what happened at the meeting. I wonder what that document is. I wonder what the mayor was referring to. Can I see that? Okay, that was the purpose of Oprah. But now it's become a business because guess what? If the clerk, because of everything else she has to do, if she gets that out after that seventh day, it's a, it's not automatically a violation, but then it gives the requested the ability to make a complaint to the Government Records Council that oversees this to say that they didn't respond in time. And then the Government's Record Council looks at and determines whether or not it's a lawful violation and
which I might add is a personal liability.
Right. And, and it's not, right. It's, it's on the clerk and her license. So it, it is a very, it's what started out as a very good concept of openness is really become an enterprise, a business enterprise.
Thank you, Counselor. So Chief Pearl?
Yes, sir. You know, it's important to recognize too that, you know, as technology gets more involved and these Oprah requests, they apply to our officers' mobile, mobile video recorders and body cams. So if somebody wants to Oprah an incident that we were involved with and had four officers there, that's four body cameras and that's for in-car cameras. And I have to have our records custodian review it and then run it through a software in real time. So if it's an hour long, that's going to require him eight hours to sit there and we have to move a redaction box around the video to redact certain things from the video which are not releasable to the public. So sometimes it is very overburdening.
Council President.
Uh, to the floor, Mrs. Kraus.
And I also just wanted to add that the redaction process has become more tedious since Daniel's Law has been enacted because we are checking for more redactions now to make sure that certain addresses are not released to the public.
Can you explain to the public what the Daniel's Law is?
Yeah. So Daniel's Law is a law that prohibits the municipality from releasing addresses of current or retired law enforcement, judges, prosecutors. So we are required to actually go through a process of certifying to the state that we have made these redactions and removed this information from our website. So now with Oprahs, we're constantly combing through to make sure that this information isn't included in any of the Oprah requests that are going out.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to have your permission to set up some meetings with Chief Pearl. I would like to discuss this further with our clerk and Mr. Crucia, then call upon our local legislative bodies. And I'll be asking the council to join me to go pay those local legislators a visit as well as other legislators that we have contacts with throughout the state. To me, this, this needs to be, I would like to use the word reform, but maybe go back to have for some of this information. So it court tails the people that really don't, don't want to Oprah or just not people that don't want Oprah. But people have nothing better to do but than Oprah. So it cuts down on the, on the stat, on the pressure on the staff that they've been receiving.
I, I absolutely concur. I believe that it's becoming onerous to the taxpayers of not just Little Falls, every municipality in the state that these Oprahs are coming in, in the volume that they are. And the, yeah, without question, this is something that needs some overhaul and some additional consideration from legislators.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything to add for us this evening?
I think I had my say already.
Thank you. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Habitz, second by Councilman Ben Cherry. All those in favors do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion do so by saying nay. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. And for the record, you could just state your name. You do not need to state your address. That's a, that's an agenda item, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Andrew Baggett, Seventy-eight Franklin Road, Denville. My Little Falls interest is one oh five Main Street between Center and Stevens. I just, congratulations to all the recipients tonight. Mr. Mayor, it's not often that I get to agree with you, but I agree with you on your gardening skills. I remember when the trees were cut down along Patterson Avenue and two Boy Scouts asked innocently about them. And you called it a tree pruning. And I had to remind you that when you prune a tree is when you have a garden and your tomato plants aren't getting enough sun. And I told you it was deforestation. And Mr. Vettery cut all those trees down without a site plan or a tree removal plan. And it wasn't until I told you that it was deforestation because it was a violation of your oath and your township code. Today's minutes weren't posted till I, I looked at ten thirty. Today's agenda was not posted till after that time.
Uh, for the record, Mrs. Kraus, please explain how agendas are posted.
Um, okay. So, so I just want to touch upon the Open Public Meetings Act states that we are required to give annual notice of all of our meetings, which we do, and for any special meetings or the like, we would require forty-eight hour notice. Within a situation where we'd have a special meeting and we provide forty-eight hour notice of that meeting, we would be required to provide a copy of the agenda as, as much as we have available at that time. As far as our annually notice meetings, there is no requirement for that.
Moving on, the minutes weren't posted for five months since September twelfth until recently. Why does that happen?
Mrs. Kraus, would you like to answer why our minutes aren't posted? There's a reason for this, sir.
Right. So because of Daniel's Law, the law that I was just speaking of prior, prior, we are taking extra care to go through our minutes to make sure that no addresses are included in those minutes before being posted on the website since we are required to certify that to the state.
Mr. Baggett, this is for agenda items. So you have to speak to the agenda. But you know, I let a couple of questions go, but we have to, if you want to address these other issues, you could come back.
I, I have, I have one more just on that. If I could finish on that. There's minutes that were approved have been posted.
This is for agenda items. So yeah.
I'll come back.
All right, thank you.
Over the, over the weekend, my phone lit up, says guardian angel. Pick up the phone. A voice tells me on the other end, there's an ordinance on tap that is going to have a direct effect on my property. And they told me what it was all about. And I want to know why I wasn't notified about ordinance thirteen forty, fifty-two, the removal of parking in front of my building and the realigning of the double yellow line. Why I was not notified of this, my tenants or neighbors.
Counselor, does the, the resident's asking why he was not notified? Does he need to be notified when we're passing this ordinance?
The simple answer is no. The ordinance, the notification is the, I'm sorry. The, the answer is the, the, there is no special notification. The notification is by virtue of introduction of the ordinance. It then gets published in the normal course. And then you have the second reading and with the hearing, and that's how the ordinance is passed.
This is very similar to ordinance thirteen forty-two that were introduced November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And at that, I didn't go to that meeting, but I came to the next meeting and I asked the same question. And you told me that it was in regards to that parking doesn't have any, it's a county road, don't have to be notified and that parking does not have an effect on my building. At that time, I remembered that the mayor, when he was a councilman in December of two thousand and sixteen on a Brower Town Road sidewalk project, he proclaimed at the meeting that he got his notice. So I'm wondering what the difference is here. How come you're notified and nobody else is notified? And all I hear about is transparency, transparency, transparency. There was recently a meeting about your sidewalk project and it was hand delivered two days before and nobody delivered one to my house. So I don't know where the transparency is or why I wasn't notified for any of my tenants or anybody else here. I have to get a phone call from a concerned citizen. And you were notified on a pounding vote project.
Okay, before you answer, Mayor, again, Counselor, can you go over the fact that how we, how, why? I, I guess Mr. Bag is asking why he did not get, receive the letter for this ordinance. Is that correct?
There's, there is no, there is no.
Courtesy. I've been paying my taxes for thirty years here.
We're going to answer the question, sir.
Because it's, it's a roadway. It's not, it's, it's a township or county owned roadway. It is whatever notice, I, I think this was before my time about Brower Town, but that may have been something that the county did on its own or even if the township did it, it wasn't required under the law to do any type of notification. It's not, you have no particular, nor does any resident have any particular right to a roadway or what's done with the roadway. It is, is township or county property. So then, once again, notification is the, is the fact that it is listed twice at least. You have the introduction, then you have the second reading, and in between you have the publication that's required by law.
We, what is the purpose of this ordinance? To remove five spots in front of my building without a loading spot or any consideration for my tenants, neighbors, or anything else. Can you give me an explanation on that, Mr. Mayor?
So, but before we clarify, Mayor, five spots in front of your building, sir?
Five spots. And they, they haven't been painted and at times there's seven people parked there.
Mayor?
Sure. So I'm going to backtrack a little bit because Brower Town Road, I don't know what you're referring to about me receiving notice about Brower Town Road.
December sixteen, two thousand and sixteen minute, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly not. I, I would not receive. I don't know what notice I would receive about Brower Town Road.
Notice from the town.
And I received a notice from the town? I, I don't live on Brower Town Road. I would not receive notice about a project happening on Brower Town Road. I, if you're referring to the county adding a sidewalk to Brower Town Road.
Right, that's what we're talking.
Passaic County added a sidewalk to Brower Town Road.
And you were notified.
The township was notified by the county of Passaic.
This, this is a town, this is a town project that I could have been notified. This is brought on by you.
You are now raising the question as to a municipal streetscape project occurring in downtown Little Falls. Every single business along Main Street was hand delivered a letter on October seventeenth advising them that there was a meeting that was scheduled that anyone could attend about the streetscape project. Your tenants must have received this letter and did not provide it to you. So if your tenants did not provide you with a copy of this letter, there's nothing that, that I can do about that. But your tenants received this letter because our DPW hand delivered this letter to every single storefront along Main Street that was being impacted by this streetscape project. So your tenants absolutely received the letter on October seventeenth advising them that there was a meeting scheduled about this streetscape project.
Two days later. Let's move on. What is the purpose of this ordinance? What, what, what is the reasoning for removing five parking besides putting me?
Sure. So there are several reasons, and I went through this at great length at the last meeting. There are several reasons that parking spaces are being removed from this particular area. And we're referring to the south side of Main Street between Center and Stevens Ave. And the reason is this. This is no secret to anyone that the area between Center and Stevens Ave on Main Street is extremely narrow currently. As part of the Main Street Streetscape Project, and this was explained in detail at the meeting that occurred on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the sidewalk on the north side of Main Street between Center and Stevens Ave is being widened by up to about two feet in some areas, eighteen inches to twenty-four inches in various spots. And the sidewalk is being widened because we're looking to make Main Street more pedestrian friendly in our downtown. It's one of the goals of a streetscape project and part of the DOT funding that comes along with it is making it pedestrian friendly. And on the north side of Main Street in this particular area, there are portions of the sidewalk that are extremely narrow. And in widening the sidewalk, we are going to obviously make the roadway more narrow. The roadway in that particular section is already too narrow to have two lanes. The roadway in that particular section is already too narrow to have two lanes of travel and two side of the street parking. So by widening the sidewalk by about twenty four inches, we are certainly making the roadway far too narrow to have two side of the street parking and two lanes of travel. So parking on one side of the street is being eliminated in that particular section of the roadway. So that is what these ordinances in conjunction all do there.
I want to go back to the November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen ordinance thirteen forty one, same same ordinance. You said, Mister Mayor, that the most difficult turn is from Stevens, the left hand turn on the Main Street.
Sure.
There was a gentleman sitting right there at the meeting that came. If it's the left hand turn, you need to take away the parking on the other side. You want to take the hazard away on the other side. So Chief Squeezy driving a fire truck on December seventeenth, and the minutes are wrong. It's switched around here what was said, but the video says that Chief Squeezy said the left hand turn is the most difficult spot, so you want to take away the parking on that side. Years ago, on 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 the other, on on Patterson Avenue.
I can explain. I can explain. So engineers have reviewed this area and have determined that by real realigning the roadway, what's going to happen is the double yellow line is going to move further to the south, towards your building. By doing so, it will move the vehicles closer to that side of the street which will allow vehicles, again, longer vehicles, bucks, uh buses, fire trucks, thing trucks, or things of that sort to make the 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 wide left turn around them because they'll be closer to the south side. And we are going to ensure that the closest parking spot to the east on the north side of the street is pushed further west so that the vehicles are able to make the swing. But because the vehicles that are on the roadway will be closer to the south side, again, closer to the 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 curb in the street on that side, uh the curb on that side, the trucks will be able to make the wider turn around them. And because the cars will be pushed further to the west, they will have no issue making those wider turns around them there.
The problem is with the eastbound bus traffic making the right hand turn onto Stevens. It already rides the double yellow line, you cannot move that any further this way without creating a public tra- safety traffic issue. For school buses, students, teachers, chaperones, bus drivers, New Jersey Transit buses, anybody that travels through this intersection will tell you, a traffic personnel will tell you.
Okay, Mister Baggett, I'm gonna help you, Mister Baggett, I'm gonna help you. We provided New Jersey Transit with all of the ordinances that you were referring to. The response that we received is thank you, very much appreciated. New Jersey Transit is very well aware of all of the proposed ordinances, and they take no objection to the ordinances as proposed.
I I asked that we go over and have a site meeting and you observe what goes on there. Uh, I'd like to ask the chief, how do you feel?
Mister Baggett, Mister Baggett, Mister Baggett.
It's it's so obvious, so this is here to stick it to me.
Yes, no.
And it's ridiculous.
The the questions come through the floor. And you don't have a right to ask anyone a question unless I approve it, so that's how we conduct the meeting. So you like to ask the chief a question, what's the question you like to ask?
I'd like to ask the chief.
Okay, what?
You're riding behind a landscaping truck, this guy's making a right hand turns coming from here onto Stevens, and he swings across the double yellow line. Is that fine with you?
Sir, I can answer that question, it's illegal to cross a double line.
Well, then 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 it needs to go the other way, the parking needs to be taken on. Talk about grandfathered in, this should be grandfathered in, I I'll finish with this, this one little thing. Years ago, between uh east east of Patterson Avenue, there was parking in front of Bissoff's and the Pizza Express on both sides of the street. And one side had to go. What was determined was that the fire trucks coming out of Patterson Avenue, dead ending into Main Street, making a left on to go towards the high school. We're gonna take away the parking in front of them because it's a hazard. Same thing with the left hand turn off the Stevens here, every which way around it goes. It should be the other way around, it is a safer way to do this. It is every which way around, it should be done the other way, there is no reason for this.
Okay, so for the record, Mister Baggett, what's the other way that you're proposing?
Excuse me?
What is the other way that you're proposing?
Remove the parking on the other side and leave it here, create a loading spot, there's not, you didn't you didn't give any consideration for anybody here. It should be grandfathered in, these were all here, the town created this problem over the years. Look at the last spot, the furthest one west on the northbound side, there's about eight feet to the line for the handicap spot. The town created, added all these spots over the years. It should go the other way, move the bus stop back at Center Street. And Mister Mecca has fifty five apartments to go in here, not even a loading spot, okay, yes, here in the planning board, we'll put one inside or whatever was brought forth. But there needs to be spots on this side of the street for business. Number one, public safety traffic issue. Number one, the line needs to go the other way so you can swing around. I I think I've got my point across, I really hope that you take in consideration. When you drive through this intersection, look at the buses and the transportation. You go on a Saturday morning, a New Jersey Transit bus swings four feet over to make the right hand turn on Stevens. The left hand, the the left hand turn from Stevens, you need to take away the hazard out in front of you. Every which way around, it needs to go the other way. I want to add with one thing. I wasn't notified in December of two thousand and eighteen. And I went around and I asked my neighbors if they were notified, and I went into one of my shop owners across the street. And I was talking to him and he told me he had two women in there that were talking. And he told me they were friends of the mayor's wife. And what were they talking about? How they wanted to put my tenant Electric Flare out of business. Thank you.
Does the council have any questions or comments regarding the speakers? Uh, to the floor, Councilman Vincery.
I was gonna say, the mayor had something to add.
All right, I I see that, but I asked if the council had anything to say, I I I could I could see that the mayor would want to say something. Hey, or Daniel?
Yeah, I'm gonna start by saying, my wife doesn't even know what's happening at tonight's council meeting because she could frankly care couldn't care less about what goes on in my role as mayor here in town, so I I I absolutely take more than offense to your comments there. And despite that, I will tell you, I stood more than true to the word that I had with you five years ago, which was, I would not eliminate a single parking spot on your side of the street until I could provide you with ample public parking on your side of the street, which we are now doing with the acquisition of the PNC parking lot. Mister Baggett, it is absolutely, on your side of the street, there is the PNC. Okay, Mister Baggett, amazingly, nobody interrupts you when you speak, yet when I speak and it's contradictory to your position, you never let me get one worded. So please, if I may, I would like to complete one full sentence without being interrupted. Mister Baggett. There is now the PNC parking that provides public parking to your building on your side of the street. Amazingly, your building is one of the few in downtown Little Falls that provides zero parking spaces for its own tenants. Zero. Your building relies one hundred percent on public parking. I say that because it's critical that you come before this council and every planning board complaining that there's not enough parking during every application, during every meeting. Yet criticize this council for providing more downtown public parking. Your building relies upon public parking. And again, this municipality, this township council, myself as mayor has asserted, has promised that one of the goals that I have had is providing adequate downtown public parking. Because it is a concern of mine, I know that in order for our businesses to thrive, in order for our landlords to be able to provide good spaces to their tenants, there needs to be downtown public parking. With the acquisition of the PNC parking lot, the Little Falls taxpayers, myself included, have paid two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy some odd thousand dollars to acquire the PNC lot. We've paid several hundred thousand dollars to acquire the first three homes on Stanley Street each. We're now going to pay several hundred thousand dollars to re- to demolish those homes and resurface that lot to provide eighty some odd public parking spaces. So that your tenants have a business that thrives. Yet you come here, that is, we beautify the downtown so that people come to Little Falls, so that your tenants can thrive and criticize myself and this council. All you have done is taken it upon yourself to say, poor me, you're attacking me, you're assaulting me. That's all you have done for six years since I've been elected mayor. It's always been about attacking you, but yet what we have done is dumped millions of dollars into ensuring that you have a building that has not one parking space yet will be able to thrive in our downtown. And you asked me to sit here and you want everybody watching on TV to sit here and say, poor Mister Baggett. Mister Baggett.
It's a public safety traffic issue.
Mister Baggett, about my concern, you just said that we're eliminating parking spaces, what are your tenants supposed to do? That is what you came here to say, and I have to say this again, you're then setting, saying, he's sitting here saying, my wife, please. My wife, who literally could not care less about a single thing that I've done in my role as mayor. Okay, could not care less, and I promise you that, does not know what's happening tonight, I won't even tell her about this because you'll fall asleep if I tell her, frankly. Comes here, you come here to criticize this. I'm absolutely offended by this.
And so am I, this is a public safety traffic issue, the line cannot be moved.
You've been heard, New Jersey Transit has reviewed your concerns and they do not share in them.
Every which way.
So I thank you for your concerns, they've been addressed.
Anything else, Mister Baggett?
Uh, yeah, just while while we're at it, I I'd like to ask Councilman Vincery, how come uh ordinance thirteen forty one was shelved? What what is the difference that we're bringing this back today? It's the same ordinance.
I I can answer that question.
Well, I would like to hear from him, I'd like.
Mister Baggett, Mister Baggett, Mister Baggett, again, the questions are directed through the council president, and then I direct those questions, so.
You ask him, is that possible?
No, Mayor, what, we want to discuss why we have to bring that ordinance back.
It was shelved several years ago because at the time you raised the concern, what are my tenants going to do? There's no downtown public parking. And I said to you, you're right. And what we had discussed at that meeting is the township's parking plan, if you recall.
Yeah.
Around that same time, and it was to secure the PNC parking lot. And I said to you that until the township can secure public parking in the immediate vicinity of your building, we won't remove those parking spaces.
You have yet to create anything new, that was an existing lot.
Secured.
Existing lot that now during the day is full. Is full of.
Mister Baggett, Mister Baggett, you made your point, very thorough this evening, I appreciate it, you're.
Thank you all for your time, it's a public safety traffic issue.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Good evening. Good evening.
I'm interested in the the same, on the same subject in the same building. We, I I've been involved in this town for many years, mo- most of the meetings that we had in the Business Association way back when, and the a a good part of the Main Street USA was all about creating parking. And and that was my interest in getting involved in those um organizations for for other things, the street fair, but but a lot of it was to create parking. And I see it that my building doesn't have any parking as the mayor just pointed out, there's there's no parking with that building, it's just blocked in there. And it's been like that because the building's been there since day one. And the the opposite side of the street, there's a great big parking lot behind all of those businesses. So I feel those people on the other side of the street that have businesses, they can say to their employees, don't take the the street parking, park back there, park behind, you know, the building. Uh, we we don't have that, we can't tell our tenants, it's kind of like you're you're on your own with parking. And I just wondered if you considered the fact that if you remove parking from the opposite side of the street, those businesses and those buildings and those tenants can, they have parking in the rear. We don't have parking in the rear, so did you consider maybe taking away the parking on the other side of the street where they have parking in the rear? To to widen the road, instead of taking away from our side that has no parking in the rear, why couldn't you widen the road by taking the parking away from people that have that big parking lot back there? You know, it's it's pretty tough to ha- we had Marfa, the tenant that had the baby and the baby carriage and, you know, to have no spots over there for deliveries for. And we have plenty of pictures of buses, we've been taking pictures of buses trying to make the right hand turn onto Stevens without crossing over the double yellow lines. It's not often that they don't have to swing over the, it it just seems to me that the parking is, you're being, you're eliminating it from the the wrong side of the street.
Mrs. Baggett, this governing body um has been entertaining this, you know, for quite some time, it was no, not a rushed decision. This decision wasn't happened easily, this decision comes over many, many, many hours, many schematics of coming to where we've reached this evening to vote on this this tonight. You have a a good question, Mayor, why cannot that, why cannot that, why can't that happen?
So did we ask the engineer to maximize the number of on-street public parking spaces? And we are able to get more spaces on the north side of the street than the south side of the street. And the big reason is because of where that bus stop and bus shelter is located in front of Valley Bank. There is a huge area of space there that requires the bus zone where there is no parking and where no parking could be located. So the number of public parking spaces that could be located on the south side of the street is far less than on the north side of the street, and that's the reason why the north side of the street was selected for the public parking spaces.
Right, so in the end, we are not here to say, oh, you know, we want the town to say, oh, look at the the baggage, look at the but we are, we're the ones suffering, nobody else, just us. So that's why we're here, that's why we're upset, because it very be very easy to say, all right, well, listen, we're gonna lose two parking spaces to this building that's been here, that's been paying taxes all these years and shoveling the sidewalk. And maybe two more parking spots can go in your new lot. But I mean, you're talking, you you're able to gain a few more spots by putting the parking on the opposite side of the street, but you could really be doing a lot of good for the tenants and the businesses on my side of the street if you maybe reconsider. That's basically all I have to say, I guess at this point it's too late. But I I I didn't really, you know, I've never really felt that you know, we asked, hey, can can you meet us on the corner, can we point out the buses, can we stop and watch the buses turning the corner? Nobody ever would meet with us about this.
Mrs. Baggett, we did do that, we did not come to this conclusion, but without doing all this research. This this ordinance that we're voting on this evening didn't come before us by just saying, let's just do this. All that data, all that time was spent. Does the council have any uh questions or comments?
I do, do we?
Councilwoman Havitz?
Um, Chief Paul, do we have any um documentation of all of the uh drive-by uh mirrors and things that are hit with parking on that side of the under side of the street? Do we have anything like that?
Kind of being put on the spot to answer that, that, you know, it's like, I don't, I it's it's like, you know, but I think overall uh that area, I know there's been uh quite a few rearview mirror, I've never rearviewed, side mirrors being hit both sides, so I I we're gonna answer the question, no, we have one meeting, folks. So I know there's, I know there's a mayor, side mirrors that get hit there. I guess the question is, is that kind of, that happens very often? And if you could comment on, you know, the tightness of that area.
Uh, while I don't have any figures in front of me, Council President, I could speak anecdotally probably over the course of my career that I've dealt with numerous side swipes or, you know, um. Actually, I think we actually had a police car involved crash down there trying to just navigate through the, the tight space that it, that it is with some of the stop vehicles there. So.
So I'd also like, Councilman Murphy, you're a volunteer fireman, is that correct?
Yes.
Have you had to drive through that area for emergencies?
Uh, yes, Council President, I have. And, uh, you know, just, just to comment on that, uh, when we had gone through fourteen fifty-two, uh, I made a comment that it's, it's never an easy decision to take parking spaces away. It's not something I would seek to do or look to do. But in what Council President's referring to, I did comment that, um, you know, from my personal experience, um, going through the intersection hundreds of times in a fire truck, it is incredibly difficult to maneuver it. Especially when there are buses there, when there are, you know, cars stopped. It is extremely hazardous to go through there with a, with a large fire truck and try to do it fast. It's, it's almost impossible to do.
My husband and I are total agree.
Let the council, yeah, let's, ma'am, ma'am, please, let the councilman finish.
Right. And so I think, I think I understand what you're saying. And I think we can agree that um, with widening the street, it would be even more difficult to maneuver that. I think you would agree with that, correct?
Widening the street.
Sorry, widening the sidewalk, my apologies.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be incredibly difficult. And so, you know, one of the reasons that we decided, I decided to vote yes on this. Um, on top of widening the sidewalk, knowing how hard it is to get through there with an emergency vehicle. Uh, knowing somebody who has also had their mirror taken off on that side of the street. Um, and, and, you know, from a safety standpoint, moving those vehicles off the street and putting them into the PNC parking lot provides a safer outcome for people getting out of vehicles, a better outcome for people's mirrors, for emergency vehicles. I think that was more or less the basis of, of, you know, why the yes vote happened.
Does it, does any, there's, sir, 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 please, there's, don't do that. Please don't do that. Don't, don't shout from the audience. We have a system here and that's what we're going to buy by. Okay? Thank you. Does the council have any other questions or comments? Mayor, any final thoughts?
You know, again, you know, uh, public parking, ensuring that our businesses thrive is absolutely critical to our downtown. I, I absolutely want every single business in our downtown to be able to thrive. I want our tenants to have accessible parking. Having that in close proximity to where your business is, to where your tenants live is absolutely necessary for all of those things to be possible and for, you know, success in, in business, success in being a landlord, success in things continuing to, to, to work and thrive in downtown Little Falls to exist. It, it's all essential. I, I am sympathetic to that. I understand that. And that is why four or five years ago, we did pull back on eliminating those spots then. We were unable to provide nearby public parking for the residents, the tenants, the businesses, and I believe the nail salon was even open at that time, uh, back then. And it absolutely would have, and we realized at the time that it absolutely, uh, would have been extremely difficult for those businesses, for those tenants to be able to park, to have somewhere to go. Um, if we eliminated those spots. And we did put the brakes on that and we heard you. Uh, that's, it's not some, we, we have never been tone deaf up here when concerns have been brought to us. We did the same with, with marijuana ordinances. We've done the same on a number of occasions up here. Um, now there is no doubt that parking on one side of this street needs to be eliminated when this road is narrowed by twenty-four inches. Um, the question is what side? And what we've done is, and we know that downtown public parking is in high demand. This now is a matter of what is going to be, what's the biggest issue? And it's providing the maximum amount of spaces. Now what we are asking is the biggest inconvenience is, do people need to actually walk across the street from one side to the other or not? That's the biggest inconvenience that will exist, whether it is one side of the street or the other to the downtown businesses on one side of the street or the other. And whether the businesses on the other side of the street need the parking spaces eliminated or, or, or whether it's your side. Um, you know, and right now there are more businesses on the other side of the street that have uh, the parking spaces continuing to exist there. There are, uh, far more businesses on that side of the street currently. Um, so again, you know, i- i- if there is a development that is created on the corner of Main Street and Stevens, they will also be required to provide, uh, you know, a, a part of parking requirement adequate to meet their needs there. Uh, so there should be ample parking for their site in the future. Uh, so the need on the south side of the street should also, again, be reduced by that additional parking that should be provided by that site in the future. Uh, again, again, maximizing the downtown public parking was the real consideration that went into this. Uh, we've conferred with transit because it is certainly, public safety is absolutely another consideration that has gone into this. This was not taken lightly. Providing public parking is absolutely another consideration. And again, this was not done, uh, you know, on a whim. So again, it was thought.
All I want to end is that I think it could, you might have been able to consider that let's take the parking away from the people that have a parking lot and not take away the parking from the people that don't have a parking lot. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, no, no comments from the audience, please. It's okay. Take your time. Your name, sir?
Joseph Billy Joy, thirty-four, We're Hallam.
Good evening.
The only, even for parking, I'm talking about too myself. There is a, a building, the, uh, building right now. I would like to know how many apartments that, that, that do have.
Sir, you can bring that issue up at the next, uh, when we, this is right now is for agenda items only. So we're discussing about the agenda. Do you have an issue about the parking ordinance that we're?
No, no, just, just one quick question. That's all. It's a, how many apartment they have this building? And how many space they, they have it because it's like a skyscraper over there. They, they build it. I mean, it's like a four, I mean, I, I, I don't understand. Where the hell they're going to park these people? That's all.
Yeah, the parking, the parking has been satisfied by the amount of units that are there, sir.
It gets impossible.
You know, it's not, it has been satisfied.
Was supposed to be one family over there. That's all it is. Because it's small, it's small. It's not that big. I don't know. They gotta have at least six to eight apartment over there. You're supposed, if you have a six apartment, you gotta have a twelve spot to park. No way. And you know what happened? They gotta, gotta come over and park it on, on, on my street. I know. Because they are the, the people that come over. Because they're three houses over there. We are. And all the time, and sometime you can get out of the driveway. That's, that's one thing I don't like that. But anyways, I'm finished.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kruja, is there anyone in the chat that would like to speak? Oh, thank you. We'll move on. Have a motion to close the public comment. Moved by Councilman Vincieri.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havitz. All those in favor of closing the public comment, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay. Motion carries. Let's talk about the consent agenda. Um, does, let's go over the resolutions. Uh, let's take it from the top. Mayor, do you want to do the resolutions from A?
Absolutely. Council President, happy to, to run through these. Flip to the correct page. All right, the resolutions this evening. Uh, the first, the resolution authorizing the increase in deferred school taxes for the regional high school. Uh, so the reason that we have, uh, this particular uh, resolution on, and we run this each and every year, is what we need to understand is that the school year runs different, or I should say the school tax year runs different than the municipality's tax year. Uh, municipalities run on a January one to December thirty-one calendar year, while schools run on a July one to June thirty year. Uh, and for that reason, the way that they request that taxes be paid to them versus the way that municipalities collect taxes are very different things. So every single year, we authorize the increase in the deferred school taxes uh, for schools, and that is what resolution, resolution A will accomplish.
Questions regarding A? B, Mayor?
Sure. Resolution B is the resolution providing for an increase in reserve for uncollected, uncollected tax percentage. And what this does, and this is another one that is passed every single year by the governing body. And what this does is allow for able to three and a half percent, uh, increase in our reserve for uncollected, uncollected taxes. And it's on a three-year, uh, running allocation taxes that every single year, the third year backdrops off uh, of our rolls. So this allows us to collect for the maximum amount of reserve in uncollected taxes.
Questions, counsel regarding B? C, Mayor?
Sure. Uh, item C is the resolution to introduce the two thousand twenty-three municipal budget, which I have a presentation for this evening. I don't know if you want me to get through the rest of them before I, uh.
Let's do the rest of them before we go to the budget.
All right. So you should get through the rest of them. That's about it. All right. So, all right, we'll do that in just a few minutes. Uh, item D, resolution D is the resolution authorizing the treasured issue check in the amount of six thousand one ninety-four ninety-four, representing a tax refund on the property known as block two thirty-seven lot forty-four point one five due to disabled veteran exemption. Again, we'll see these occasionally throughout the year, uh, as individuals qualify for tax refunds on their properties. This one in particular is due to disabled veteran exemption.
So, uh, A, Mayor?
Sure. Similarly, this one is also a tax refund in the amount of three thousand seven oh six sixty-two due to several, uh, overpayments in taxes.
That's pretty straightforward. F?
F is a resolution authorizing the purchase of rocks all under the Passaic County Co-op. Again, we're not necessarily purchasing currently under the Passaic County Co-op. It just gives us the ability to do so. Uh, at, from time to time, we enter into various co-ops giving us the authority or right to purchase various, uh, items, whether it be salt, whether it be various other goods from various co-ops.
Item, uh, resolution G?
Resolution G is the resolution approving the renewal of, of the plenary retail consumption license for the period from July one twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And throughout the course of the year, the various, uh, liquor licenses will come up. And this one in particular is coming up this time.
See no questions? We'll move to H. But Mayor, on H, I think we're the first township to do this. Resolution authorizing participate in suburban metro joint insurance fund certified by an EMS department program.
That is correct. We are, uh, the first to do this and I am very proud and this evening recognizing one of our very own, uh, female EMS and, uh, individuals here in the room still, still joining us. Uh, EMS Ramos over here, uh, or I should say EMT Ramos. Um, under the coordination of our EMS coordinator, Mike Banderski. He has requested permission to allow us to enter into a resolution authorizing the participation in the suburban metro joint insurance fund. Uh, this will actually allow us for a, I believe, a five thousand dollar credit towards our insurance costs annually. Um, in becoming, uh, certified as part of our fire and EMS department program as part of our EMS program here in town. Um, we would be the first to do this. It would be a credit towards the amount of insurance that we pay. Uh, again, becoming certified, much like our police department is accredited in what they do. Uh, they go through various rigorous, uh, various rigorous accreditation process and need to recertify every several years. Uh, we're looking to do the same with our EMS program here in town. It would give us a five thousand dollar credit towards our, uh, insurance costs.
Okay, Mayor, let's talk budget.
All right. So I'm going to, uh, get my budget presentation on the screen here. So bear with me for a minute. All right. And this is the two thousand twenty-three municipal budget as proposed for introduction by the council. And the annual municipal budget provides the spending authority for all township departments. Uh, the presentation will provide an overview of our two thousand twenty-three spending plan and estimates the funding required to support that plan. Uh, only public information is presented herein. Confidential information has been specifically excluded from this presentation. We'll go through some of the highlights, the revenue, the appropriations, the debt and the tax rate. So the introduced budget, uh, will have a comparison of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three here. And our fund balance utilized in two thousand twenty-two was one million nine hundred and seventy thousand versus two million two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And our anticipated revenue going from four million four hundred and sixty-three thousand eight oh six to five million four hundred and sixty-one thousand five twenty-four. Our library tax is going from five hundred and ninety-four thousand two seventy-two to six hundred and fifty-one thousand four thirty-two. Our receipts from delinquent taxes is dropping from four hundred and eighty thousand to four hundred thousand dollars. Leading our amounts to be raised by taxes at fourteen, from fourteen million thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to fourteen million four hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Our total budget being, it was twenty-one million five hundred and forty-six thousand four ninety-three, increasing to twenty-three million one hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. We have in cap appropriations last year of fifteen million two hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, dropping down to fourteen million one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. With out of cap appropriations dramatically increasing from six million two hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars up to nine million twenty-nine thousand and seven dollars.
Mayor, before you continue, can you please explain fund balance in cap and out of cap appropriations?
Sure. So, uh, several years ago, there were, uh, items that were considered uh, inside the cap and other items considered outside the cap. And outside the cap are expenses such as a healthcare, uh, related expenses, pension contributions and a number of other items that do not need to fit within the two percent cap appropriations that we are limited to each and every year. So we'll see here, some of the other budget highlights include an anticipated surplus of two million two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-three budget with one million four hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars remaining in surplus. Library taxes are six hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars for two thousand twenty-three. And appropriations have been set to reflect salary increases in the, at, uh, in the two point two point seven five percent for two thousand twenty-three. And the Teamsters bargaining unit contract is in negotiations and has not been settled to date. We have public employee retirement system cost reflecting a cost per employee of nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. And the township has hired an assistant township administrator as part of our succession planning to meet the township's needs in anticipation of the retirement of the current township administrator in two thousand and twenty-four. For our police department, police and fire pension costs reflect a cost per officer of forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. And we have our vehicle acquisition program for our police continuing with the purchase of two new police cars in two thousand and twenty-three, something we have done each and every year, uh, at least since I have been elected mayor. This is a massive expense with insurance costs being up two hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars over last year's expense. We also have public retirement pension costs increasing a hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-five dollars. Another massive increase at our solid waste and recycling costs increasing three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We also have fuel costs up sixty-five thousand dollars. And in two thousand twenty-three, debt service costs are up a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars over the prior year. In two thousand twenty-three, again, assessed values are one million five hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-five, sorry, one billion five hundred and forty-seven million five hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars. A very slight increase over our two thousand twenty-two assessed value of one billion five hundred and forty-two million nine hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. That is slightly different than what I had announced at the, uh, prior meeting. We had gotten a slightly updated figure uh, from the county in comparison to what I indicated, uh, during the last meeting when I had done my prior presentation. Uh, the number had slightly, uh, changed from the county and I've updated that in this presentation here. Just to give you a little, uh, chart to show you the revenue that the municipality needs in order to function. You see here that we have about nineteen percent of what we collect here from revenues, about six percent of what we collect from state aid, ten percent of what we collect from fund balance, which means that about sixty-five percent of what the township needs in order to function is generated through taxes. You'll also see here that our twenty twenty-three appropriations by source, uh, a large portion of our expenditure is to our police department. After that, we are funding our debt service with any of our statutory and pension contributions, followed by our public works department. Our insurance costs are slightly higher even than, than that. Our administration costs following than our fire and EMS sewer costs over a million dollars to that. And again, a massive increase. And again, a massive increase this year to our utilities and solid waste landfill costs well over a million dollars now with a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase this year. Library, again, up a bit this year. Parks and again, and that's, that's again, to fund our library, so that's a well worthwhile expenditure there. Parks and Rec thereafter, construction, municipal court, health and human services, and again, followed by grants and emergency management. Just as a quick recap of what I had gone over. So in two thousand twenty-two, the township incurred a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar bill in unanticipated costs. And we had to pass an emergency appropriation, and that was due to the increased cost of gas prices and garbage tipping fees. And while we say garbage tipping fees, that's because the municipality ends up incinerating a majority of its garbage, as do most North Jersey municipalities these days. And because of the increased costs of gas and fuel, the costs in order to do so went up dramatically, as well as did the gasoline costs and diesel fuel costs for all of our police cars, DPW trucks and vehicles within the municipality. As a result of that, we had not anticipated the extra three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that it would cost us in those expenses last year. And for that reason, the municipality had to pass an emergency appropriation last year in two thousand and twenty-two because we had not expected to incur that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in extra fees that we had incurred. And as a result of that, it is required by statute that we include that emergency appropriation in the two thousand twenty-three budget and raise those fees and those funds this year in the two thousand twenty-three budget. So this year's budget has an additional three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that must be included and paid off this year as a result of that emergency appropriation. Essentially by statute, we're allowed to fund, fund the additional three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars last year so long as we increase and pay that off this year. So we were required to do that. We also have, and ironically, it's the same number, an additional increase this year in our solid waste and recycling of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This year's fuel costs are up sixty-five thousand dollars over last year's. Our insurance costs are up one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, four, one hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And our pension contributions are up one hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-five dollars. So adding just these five budget items together that we are required to include in this year's budget. And this does not include increases to regular salaries or any other regular expenditures that the municipality has in our days of ever-growing expenses. These five items alone are an increase to the budget this year of over one million dollars. It's a million forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And when you look at it, every single tax point in Little Falls is approximately a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So had we been in a position where we not had additional revenues being added to the the budget as a general rule, we would have had to have funded every single one of these this year as an individual tax point. So essentially, these five items alone, without increases to salaries, without taking into consideration any other things that would have needed to be funded in the budget, would have equated to almost seven points in this year's budget by themselves. But fortunately, we had anticipated additional costs being added to the budget. We have some additional revenues coming in from just some of the, and again, we only have some of the developments completed at this point. Fortunately, we are only seeing a budget increase of a mere two point one points this year, which again, is going to result in about a five dollar per month increase to the average home in Little Falls on the municipal side of the budget. So on the average home in Little Falls, you only see a five dollar per month increase on your homes taxes. And again, really, we had anticipated regular increases, not necessarily at that cost. And but for the emergency appropriation here in Little Falls this year, there would have essentially been no tax increase in Little Falls in two thousand and twenty-three. So just as a comparison, you can see here across the board our debt limit as well as what we actually have incurred in municipal debt compared to the schools debt here within the municipality. And you can see that we are really just at a little bit over the, you know, fifty to sixty percent mark here in our, in our debt. So we are in a pretty good spot as far as the amount of debt that we currently have. Here's the actual figures on the allowable debt limit is fifty-four thousand two eighteen and sixty-three dollars, and the authorized debt as of December thirty-first of this past year was thirty-two million one hundred and twenty-two thousand six thirty-three. The available borrowing left is twenty-two million ninety-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, leaving the percentage of debt at one point seven seven. You'll see here our tax rates over the past handful of years, still as an estimated figure for two thousand twenty-three as we wait for final figures from our schools and county. And I'm not going to go through each and every single one of these numbers. This will be made available to the public and posted on the township website. So every one of these numbers will be readily available for you. But you can see here, this year's estimated tax rate will be a three, three, two, seven. So, and that is based upon the the breakdown that you can all see here on the screen. And again, just as a final number, that brings this year's total assessed valuation of the municipality to the one billion five hundred and forty-seven million five hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars. So the question is, then how much do I pay? And you'll see here the breakdown of the local portion of the debt versus the total, I'm sorry, of the tax rate versus the total portion of the tax rate. And the local portion of the tax rate is really a point nine three one of the total three point three two seven. And again, still the estimate on the two thousand twenty-three as we wait for final figures to come in. And so how much did the average taxpayer pay? And here it is, the average assessed value in two thousand twenty-one versus two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. You'll see here a slight increase. We are now up to three hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in two thousand twenty-three. The total tax in Little Falls going up to ten thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Now, what that means is, and what I don't want people to do, is to say, wow, my taxes from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three are going to be jumping to the extent that you see here because the, there is a major difference, again, based upon the average assessed valuations here in town. So the breakdown here is on the screen on the total tax, and you will see here that the home assessed at the average value of three sixteen eight hundred, we're paying total tax ten thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, the municipal portion of that is two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars in total taxes. And that leaves municipal percentage of real estate taxes at about twenty-eight percent. So of your total tax bill, and this number has remained fairly flat, of the total taxes that you pay, about twenty-eight percent of the taxes that you pay actually comes to the municipality, to the township of Little Falls. The remaining seventy-two percent is paid between schools and the county and the library. You'll see here the municipal tax rate and a chart that breaks down the municipal versus the school versus the county versus open space in the library each and every year from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-three, just for a visual comparison. As everybody knows, the schools, again, being county, as well as the, I'm sorry, the regional, as well as the local component of the schools combines to make the total school portion there. So that includes Passaic Valley High School, as well as our local schools under the school portion there. As far as capital budget for two thousand twenty-three, our capital budget is a required part of the annual budget for all municipalities in the state of New Jersey. NJSA forty-eight four dash forty-three provides that the budget is a plan for expenditures of public funds for capital purpose. The authorization to make the expenditure still requires a capital ordinance adopted by the township council for each specific project. The capital budget addresses the needs of the township's infrastructure and equipment requirements, and if authorized by the council, will affect an increase in current debt of one million eight hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And you'll see, we do have one particular expense this year that is larger. So this year, the capital budget plan includes a, for the police, a school security upgrade of about fifty thousand dollars. For company four, a new engine of about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. An EMS building of about one point two million dollars. For our DPW sanitary sewer improvements of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Road resurfacing program of five hundred thousand dollars. Municipal facilities, and improvement, which include improvements to buildings of about a hundred thousand dollars. Parking improvements of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. DOT street skate projects of about one point one seven five. Improvements to Wilmore Park of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which have total capital requests of about four point five six. The amount funded by grants will total about seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, which required down payments of one hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which will have debts authorized of three point six three five, six hundred and fifty dollars, with debt service in two thousand twenty-three of one million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. So two hundred, two thousand twenty-three debt authorizations of three million six hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, with a net increase in debt of one million eight hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Which leads us to our budget hearing and adoption, which will occur on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. And that rounds out this year's budget hearing.
And present questions from the council regarding the budget, like to discuss any issues? Mayor, if I was a resident just listening to the budget this evening and I saw that, you know, you had a surplus, and then you're asking for a tax, you know, two tax point increase, tell me why not use surplus to offset my taxes?
Sure, so having a bit of a surplus allows us to maintain our bond ratings, which is currently able to double A, I'm screwed you. And having a double A bond rating is what allows us to ensure that we are able to receive the interest rates that we do on our bonds and on and on the rates that we are able to receive, which allows us to pay down the debts that we have at lower rates. If we had no surplus, we would risk, we run the risk of being downgraded on our, on our bond ratings, and what that does is it may actually require the amount that we end up paying towards our debt to skyrocket. And that would actually run the risk, while, while we wouldn't have that amount in our surplus, what we would end up paying annually towards the debts that the municipality has to increase, which would require us to actually tax the residents at potentially higher rates in order to pay down the annual expense that we would have in our annual interest rates.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? We'll move on. Let's, we'll need a vote on this, right? Let's go back, right. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Made by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Patel. This is a voice vote. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, at this time, please read fourteen fifty-five.
Introduction of ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, an ordinance entitled Calendar Year Two Thousand Twenty-three Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Cost of Living Allowance and to Establish a Cap Bank with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Have a motion to introduce ordinance fourteen fifty-five?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Havlet's?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vanchery. This is a roll call to introduce fourteen fifty-five. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance fourteen fifty-six.
Introduction of ordinance number fourteen fifty-six, an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to amend Chapter Seven on Street Regulations of the Code of the Township of Little Falls with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Have a mo, have a motion to introduce fourteen fifty-six?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Havlet's. Mrs. Kraus called a roll on fourteen fifty-six.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes, have a motion to introduce, to open the meeting to the public for general matters?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havlet's. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. It is preferred if you give your name and address to the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open for general matters.
Andrew Baggett, seventy-eight Franklin Road, Denville, one oh five, one oh seven Main Street. Minutes that were approved earlier have been posted for three weeks. February seventeenth, I believe it was. I'm not exactly sure. What was, what was the twenty-seventh? February twenty-seventh was approved this evening?
Right.
They've been posted for three weeks with a litany of mistakes. Is that what was approved? They've been on the website for three weeks since the September twelfth. All that got put on there, February thirteenth. They've all been on there already on, on the web.
February twenty-seventh and March thirteenth, the ones that were posted this evening?
Uh, the one before that, the one, the February, uh, February thirteenth, is it? February?
Yes, they were the same.
They've been listed on the website since when, when September twelfth was the last one, and then it came out that they were posted with the ones with the litany of mistakes in there.
What were the names?
Mr. Backus, when you're saying litany of mistakes.
Somebody's, a motion was second by somebody that was absent.
So those motions have been approved.
That meeting, there was no comments made. So I'm wondering, is that what was approved? I'm just wondering.
That is correct. That's what was approved.
What was posted?
That's what was approved, sir.
And how do I go about getting that corrected? If that's what was on there, that I didn't have a comment, because I came here and spoke regarding several key issues here. So I, how does that?
There's, there's nothing you could do to get that correct.
There's, there's not, there's nothing that's gonna do. I came and spoke, and there's, there's no comment on that. Is that, is that what you're telling me?
That's correct, sir. The minutes are the minutes that were approved by the council.
I have a question for the mayor, because I've got two different answers on this one. I'm going to ask you once again, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the sale of the PNC Bank, how many spots are going to be designated in that lot with their sign on it reserved?
I've only given one answer to date. There is no specific number of spaces that are currently dedicated to that building, which is currently vacant.
I'll, I'll find out when you told me there was ten spots and five spots, five in the front, five in the back.
Told me, I, I, I. What you are referring to is when PNC, okay. Mr. Baggett, you, you, you enjoy putting words in my mouth. What you're referring to is when PNC was operating as a banking institution, the deal that we made with them was that they were, we allocated spaces to them as a bank. They had a number of spaces, I believe it was five, that were immediate, in the immediate vicinity, the closest parking spaces that were allocated for patrons of the bank to park close there so that they could easily access the bank. The deal was that they were going to get ten spaces in the furthest back corner of the lot that we were going to be building for their, the individuals that were working down the counter, as well as upstairs in their offices. The deal and contract that we signed with them stated that if they ceased operations as a bank, that they yielded all of the spaces back to the municipality. They have since ceased operations as a bank. All of those spaces have now been yielded back to the municipality. You have then since asked me how many spaces belong to that building? I have then since answered your question and said, there are no spaces that are allocated to that building because they have ceased operations as a bank. So I have provided you with two answers over two various times that you've asked two different questions. So you are correct. So you are correct. The answer now is zero. The answer when you first asked the question was fifteen.
You alluded to at the parking thing, though, that if you were going to be a nice guy, that you might let them have some spots. You kind of alluded to that. Just, just trying to clear it up because I've heard a lot of different things here and it's very confusing.
So thanks for clearing it up for me. The answer that, and you're absolutely correct. When, I, I'm, PNC is, has that building listed for sale. Somebody will eventually purchase that building. I don't know what the future use of that building will be, whether it will be a restaurant, whether it will be retail, whether it will be some other combination of the two. At some point, I am certain that there will be some request made to the municipality that some number of spaces be allocated to the bank or that they be permitted to utilize that parking lot or whatever the conversation will be. I don't know what that conversation will entail. They may request a certain number of spaces. And what I alluded to was that there may be some discussion with the future owner of that location. And there may be some request made as part of whatever deal is made with the future owner of that site. That X number of spaces are yielded to that location in the future for whatever purpose that is. I don't know. Again, we don't even know who the future owner of that site will be. So I, I, I am foreshadowing that some conversation will occur.
There's nothing in writing or anything like that. You're going to tell me if I get?
I don't even know who that I'll be talking to.
Well, I'm just asking that there's nothing in writing. There's nothing that says with the sale of that building, there's going to be spots on it.
I don't know who that writing would even be with.
What?
I don't know who that writing could possibly be.
The person selling the building is gonna, it's gonna be a selling point that we have ten spots over in this lot for you designated. That's all what I'm asking.
But sir, that, that's, there's no spots designated. That question's been answered at this time. There's nothing.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Mr. Kushia, I see a Caroline Parr that would like to speak. Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Sorry, your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Parr. I have a property on Fairfield Ave in Little Falls.
Okay.
I was just wondering, is there any update on the Fairfield Ave pump station? Ever any anticipation of a completion date?
Right. That's a great question. Something we worked really hard on to acquire property. Mayor, do we, Mr. Kushia, do you have any updates? Oh, he's pointing at Council Murphy. No, he's not pointing at. We want to, Kushia, give us an update. Well, do we have? Well, we've. Right, right now, we've continued to make the repairs that were needed on an ongoing basis. The attorney will like to talk to you about the property that we bought next to it. Is that why we're pointing at you?
Yes. You, you, you.
All right, let's just answer the question.
I do, so you gotta give me a location.
Pump station on Fairfield Ave. Fairfield Pump Station.
The property that we had been attempting, yeah, for quite some time.
Yes.
Because he had legally renting it.
Yeah, because we need that, need that piece of property in order to.
Okay, now I'm up to date. Well, I don't know, I know, I don't know it as, as that address. I know it as the bane of my existence. This, this is a piece of property that, that, that the township had entered into negotiations with, with the owner quite some time ago. The owner, apparently unbeknownst to the township, had a multitude of outstanding obligations to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And so we began a process of engaging with the D E P as well on this. It was going nowhere. We began condemnation proceedings. And through those proceedings, we were able to secure the property at nominal value, because that's what you have to do through condemnation. We were delayed for quite some time because of this battle between the property owner and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, which I believe has a lien of over a million dollars, not on this property, but on all of his properties. In the meantime, unfortunately, this gentleman had rented this property while it was in condemnation to a family that did not know that the property was in condemnation because the lander didn't bother to tell them, nor did he bother to tell them about the, about the township's multiple times indicating that it was going to condemn the property and use it as part of the new, new pump station. So unfortunately, sir, that's why we had the delays that we had because of the, not only the legal process, but also some questionable action by the, by the property owner. We have that property now, and I believe that we have finalized, I think the last thing that I was involved with was approving the engineering to go in there and, and begin that process that we're thinking about the same property.
So Mr. Parr, if I may further explain here, you were asking about the Fairfield Ave Pump Station. And the counselor's confusion is the property that he is familiar with is on East Woodcliff Ave.
Right.
Which is directly adjacent to Fairfield Ave. Obviously, the two properties intersect there in that corner. And that, that was his confusion. The property that the counselor is referring to in that location, one of the, the conversations and concerns that we had is in order for us to access the current pump station and to perform the necessary repairs that I believe were initially bonded for about, about a decade ago or more at this point, long before I was elected mayor. In order to perform the necessary repairs, we actually need to cross over a property that does not even belong to the municipality. And the issue and difficulties that we have is there are oftentimes vehicles parked there. It's blocked. Accessing it is not a very easy task. So what we were looking to do and what the engineers have actually determined is that it would actually be even easier to build a new pump station on land that would be owned by the municipality, because the pump station that currently exists there needed a complete overhaul. So what we have done is we have continued to ensure that the pumps that are there remain operational. But what we are going to do is build an entirely new pump station in a location on a new piece of property that will be readily and easily accessible by the municipality in this location that the town has essentially condemned and is, has, has or is acquired, we, we have now acquired, but what, but was in the process of acquiring for some time. So we, again, we do have an operational pump station that continues to exist there. We will be building an entirely new pump station in a location that will be more easily, readily accessible to the municipality in the future. So we will have a bigger and better pump station in that location moving forward. It will be located again on East Woodcliff Ave there, directly adjacent to Fairfield Ave that you're referring to. But the pump station that currently exists does remain operational and functional for the purpose that we needed to continue to operate at. But it is reaching the end of its useful life. So we do want to continue to move forward with building a bigger and better pump station in that location. So we are continuing to proceed with that. It is certainly not on the back burner. This was something that, again, was initially discussed well over a decade ago. And then somewhat forgotten about for a period of time, we have been made aware of the need to replace this in the past year or two, and we have been proceeding with this condemnation.
Have your question been answered, Mr. Parr?
Yes and no. My question was basically, when do you think it's going to be completed? I know your problems with there. I've been down there for fifty years. And my building is now a retention pond, and that's why I question. Every time it rains, the water comes out of the ground with the constant building up on Main Street, the old Falls Meadow location and snack time and all that. The pipe that's in the ground behind my property has been the same since nineteen seventy-four when my parents acquired it. And like I said, a bigger pump is required, I know. But like, just when do you think something is going to be done? Do you have any timeframe to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
Mr. Kushia, can you, do we have a timeframe on our process of bidding and getting this done estimate?
We, we don't have a design yet. The engineers are working on the proper design. So that's usually, I would say, six months before we even get that originally. And then, and then we've got to consider timing of the, of the construction, the bidding and all the rest of that.
I, I would guess here, sir, at least a year and a half to two years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Kushia, is there anyone else in the chat that'd like?
There is no one else.
Thank you, sir. See, no else in our council chambers that would like to come before us. Have a motion to close the public comment. So moved, moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Hablets. All those in favor opposing public comment do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay. Have a motion to close, to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancheri.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Patel. All those in favor adjourned this meeting, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.